All right, we're going to call the public meeting to order. Can I get a roll call? Member Miller. Member Latasha Nelson.
Yes.
Member Wolfinger.
Here.
Member Jacob.
Here.
Member Amawala.
Here.
Member Mercer.
Here.
Member Kelly Nelson. All right, we have, our next item is our land acknowledgement statement. This will be read by Middleton Student Council members. Emily Stotilova, Matthew Galvin, Abdul Bang. All right, nope, wrong names. We don't have anyone reading it. Well, would anyone like to read it?
At Skokie School District 73.5, we respectfully acknowledge that we have the lands of the Sioux, Hochuk, and Onebago, Mirawanami, Miami, Potawatomi, Peoria, and Kekapu Nations. These nations were forcibly removed from their traditional territories and these lands continue to carry the stories of these nations and their struggles for survival and identity. As a public institution committed to building a foundation of learning, leadership, and life, and educating our students to be critical thinkers who want to make the world a better place, we have a particular obligation to recognize the peoples of these lands and the histories of dispossession upon which our school rests. As educators, we recognize that by being silent, we are complicit in the ongoing oppression of indigenous peoples, and we take this first step in fulfilling our responsibility to critically look at colonial histories and their present day implications as we pay respect to the keepers of the land and the land itself.
Thank you, and now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag of the United States of America. At this time, public comment may be presented. Just as a reminder, the board listens to public comment but does not respond to public comment live. And also, it is limited to three minutes just for the sake of fairness. So if anyone is going to make public comment, please step to the mic.
Good evening. My name is Karen Chan. Just as a quick introduction, I'm a lifelong resident of Skokie. I was born and raised here. I have two children attending Middleton next year, first and fourth grade. And when deciding where to raise my family, I chose Skokie. Not just because I have roots here, but because I really love what Skokie represents. So today I'm here to represent 80 to 100 residents of District 73 and 1/2, who are concerned and disappointed with how cases of bullying are being handled at Middleton and McCracken. We believe that the bullying needs to stop, and these incidents go beyond kids just being kids. These incidents, which you can read about in detail in your packets, they involve physical violence, including strangulation, racism, sexism, antisemitism, homophobia, and transphobia. And these are not acceptable to anyone here. As victims, we need more communication from the school. The principal and the superintendent on the exact protocol and procedures that will be used to handle these cases of bullying. "We will look into it" is not an acceptable answer to any parent of these schools. Many of us are left with zero answers or unanswered emails or phone calls. But what we do know is that when we talk to our children about this at night, they do not feel safe at school currently. So we are here today because we need to know that our children are safe. We need transparency and clarity on the procedures, protocols, and how repeat offenses will be handled. Many of these victims are victims of repeat offenses that never resolve. So please take time to read our letter, the victim's statements, and even the details of how the responses we've received when reporting cases. You should also note that the stories you have in your packet are not all the stories that I've heard. There are a lot more. Many of those families did not want to share their stories in a public forum, so we've excluded those. But on behalf of all the residents that have signed our letter, we have a message that we are here, we are organized, and we are willing to assist and help with solutions, form committees. But we will hold those responsible for the safety of our children in the schools. We will hold them accountable. Thank you.
If there are any other public comments at this time, you can take the mic.
Hi there. My name is Megan Bunimovich, and I represent three children in our district. One moving into McCracken, one moving into Middleton for Meyer, and one in Meyer for the 2023-2024 calendar. I helped support and create the letter that you're reading, as well as collect the signatures, because my child did not feel safe or respected at Middleton. I am concerned for my middle child to attend Middleton, where bullying is met with snitches and stitches. My hope is following your review of the letter, signatures, and victim's stories, that you will be inspired to action and that this matter will be addressed on the agenda with an action plan and deliverables at the next meeting. "We will look into it," which is what I have been told time and time again, "will no longer be an acceptable response." Our children deserve a safe and welcoming environment, which is one of our district goals. Let's make it happen, and let me know how I can be of assistance, because it has to get done for August.
If there's any other public comment at this time? There will be another opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting as well. We'll move on to correspondence. We received two correspondents prior to this meeting. One was the aforementioned note from community members about bullying at McCracken and Middleton, and the other one was a note from the GSA at McCracken about the inclusivity of housing at the Camp McLean field trip. Move on to FOIA requests.
Request. The first request was from Data Research Partners LLC. We received it on April 26, 2023, requesting an employee list. Our response was given on May 3, 2023. Sorry, the response was due May 3, 2023, and we responded on May 1, 2023. The second one was requested by Local Labs, Records, and Correspondence with Lori's Children's Hospital. Our response was due on May 17. We submitted our response on May 15 of 2023.
Thank you. At this time, we have staff recognition. Does anyone want to start?
Sure. I just want to give a shout out to everyone who put together the kickoff for summer reading. I think it was two weeks ago now. That was a fun event. I think it's a new event, and it was great to have authors there. And it seemed to be, it was really well received, and a lot of people were there. So I really appreciate everyone organizing all of that.
I wanted to give a shout out to the fifth grade teachers who did a really good job getting the fifth graders rising, sixth graders excited about going to middle school. I've never seen a middle schooler as excited as my little one is about going to middle school. So hopefully that'll carry on, and I think it speaks to the preparation from the teachers.
I wanted to give a shout out to Nancy Ariola. I thought it was a really cool idea to include teachers in the graduation and allow them to give diplomas to their own children. So I know that she kind of had to change some things around when it was brought up to her. So I wanted to thank her for, you know, quick thinking and being really flexible and giving our teachers that opportunity, because it is a really special moment.
I wanted to go ahead and recognize the teachers and staff that make the end of the school year so special regarding all of the field day programming, everything from all the games and activities and send offs for those who are going from fifth grade to McCracken, McCracken to high school. It's really special to see those pivotal moments and the teachers and staff that make those so special for all of us, too.
I kind of wanted to do a dual shout out, and both kind of speak to things that our district has done to help. They're both about affinity groups. So I mean, the first one I want to shout out is, and it was detailed in the letter from the GSA that can be found in the board packet. But I knew that this was our first year that we had added a gender expansive cabin at Camp McLean, which was the work of our GSA. So it's a student-driven initiative, and I really think it's valuable. And it makes it welcoming to people that may not have felt welcome at that field trip in the past. And that was the work because of an affinity group that was able to work together and get that done. Another example also for our teachers is the introduction of an affinity group for our teachers of color. And I think that that is going to be incredibly impactful in retaining teachers that look like our students. So thank you for putting that together. I keep waiting for Emily to do the next thing. All right, we're going to adjourn to the public hearing on the proposed mandate waiver. Do I need to vote on that, Alex? No, okay.
Okay, so I'll just give a brief explanation. And so there is a cap on administrative expenditures in the functions that support principals, superintendent, and assistant superintendent, which is fiscal. Also, the support service director and the CIA are included in those at times. And for our district, we went over the cap last year, fiscal year '23. So how that works is it's from fiscal year '22's expenditures to our budget. So it's not actual to actual, it's important to know. It's actual in fiscal year '23 to what we budgeted in fiscal year '22 to fiscal year '23. The reason we have to let ISB know what happened, what was the reason why we went over, and so for us, there were two reasons. One was due to COVID, because we had a lot of increased positions and overtime that was required in order to meet our students' needs, which varied at that time. The second reason was almost complete administrative turnover, and that happened prior to the fiscal year '22. And so that included not having a CSBO full-time in the district until November. And so that brought our actuals down, and then that compared to our budget to have all of those made the difference. So that's really it. It's kind of a formality. Here we are. Any questions?
My one question is, is this a one-year waiver, or does it take us for multiple years, and what do we expect to the kind of future trajectory?
It's actually a one-year waiver, and we're limited to the number of times that we can do that in the course of five years. And so what we have to do is tell the state how we are not going to do this again. And so what we've said is that, one, we're not going to keep adding new positions without funding available for those positions that are administrative in these particular areas, because we've already filled them all. And then the second thing we said is we're going to have a full-time CSBO, and we're going to keep that, so. Any other questions?
I have a quick question. When it comes to the content of this waiver, does not having a full-time CSBO have more to do with the need for a waiver? Or was it the need for the staffing?
It was mostly the CSBO, because what we did was we had an interim who came out of the Fiscal Services Department and not the Business Managers Department. So because we paid out of AP for that interim, that was the difference.
Any further questions? All right. And then we can move to adjourn the public hearing, and we will vote on this item later. We're going to call the regular session back to order, and we are also going to make a slight change to the agenda. We're going to move up Item 7K before our information items. So we'll start there, and I'm going to hand it over to Marty. Or do I have to actually, do I have to do the vote? So I have to, got it, just kidding. Okay. It's not yours anymore, Marty. All right. So I make a motion to, I need a motion to approve Administrator Employment Contract for McCracken Assistant Principal Trevor Dykes for school year 2023-2024.
I make a motion to approve the Administrator Employment Contract for McCracken Assistant Principal Trevor Dykes for fiscal year 2023 through 2024.
Second. Motion made by Vicki Wolfinger, Member Wolfinger, and seconded by Member Mercer.
Okay, now I'm on. I just wanted to welcome Trevor to District 73 and 1/2, as well, look, stand up here, come on. District 73 and 1/2. As well as McCracken. Trevor has been in CPS at Marquette School of Excellence, where he's already accumulated quite a few leadership experiences from mentoring black male educators in the district itself at CPS, working with their equity grading team, so they could bring equitable practices to their grading practices, as well as instructional coaching teams. So he already has some experiences that are not only great leadership experiences, but really speak to some of the work that we're doing here in the district. References were outstanding, just talked about his willingness to work with parents, students, and colleagues. And through the interview process itself, our team came away just, you know, really feeling like, even after that brief time that you do have to interview a person, that they could really relate to him, his enthusiasm shone through. So really excited to have Trevor on board.
Thank you.
Welcome, Trevor.
All right, and, oh, we got to do the roll call. Member Amawala.
Yes.
Member Jacob.
Yes.
Member Wolfinger.
Yes.
Member Mercer.
Yes, and welcome.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. All right, we'll move on to our presentation for tonight from Teach+.
Marty, I'll let you.
Oh, okay.
And to the clicker.
Sure. Oh, I don't know. Yeah, I'm not good at a clicker, but.
Oh, well, I'll try it. Okay. This is dangerous. Hi, everyone. We would like to talk about our work with the National Equity Leadership Institute. When I got here in, well, two years ago, 2022, 2021, I understood that we had a charge as far as trying to diversify our teaching staff. And so I reached out to an organization, Teach+, to find out, one, just share some research with us on what are best practices when thinking about doing our, creating more diversity with our teaching staff. And so it turns out that they were actually starting a program at that time where districts could actually apply to be part of it. And so we were accepted as a member of this program for two years. So it's coming to an end now. However, the work that we're doing will not come to an end, and you'll hear that through this presentation.
Thank you. We have been meeting for the last two years, and we have some of our team members here tonight. Dr. Hightower, obviously, but we also have Kim Skurik, Nikki Derrick, Dan Swartz, and Samia Sharif here. Molly Domingo, Sally Alvarado, and who am I missing? John Shea are also on our team and served throughout the last two years. So it's been a really great experience in working, we kind of came to know it as Teach+, working with them over the last two years. I think that one of the, for us, you know, they're kind of preaching to the choir. We all joined because we wanted to work towards hiring a more diverse staff. As Dr. Hightower just alluded, it's been one of our charges, but it was one of our charges for the last strategic plan as well. And, you know, just having that passion and just having that desire to do it, unfortunately, isn't enough. And I think that working with Teach+, it's been great, is they've really dug into and helped us dig back into the how we do it. And they started with, why do we want to do it? And I think that's really important, because although we believe the research is also out there to support why we want to do this. For students of color to have a teacher of color in the building means higher test scores, means lower discipline issues, means higher engagement. So that is a natural. But also, for students not of color, we know that it brings different perspectives to the classroom. We know that it exposes them to what we really think the real world should look like and is increasingly looking like. We also know that it helps these students with problem solving and conflict resolution. So there are compelling reasons to take on this work, and that's what we've been kind of diving into the last two years. And what you're going to see in the next few minutes is just kind of some of the work we've already started, but also kind of a roadmap on what we're going to be taking on the rest of these next few years.
So Marty really spoke to quite a bit of this. This shows up in our strategic plan. It also shows up in our district equity action plan. That's a good question. Okay. And so what I was stating was, this shows up in our strategic plan, it shows up in our equity plan, it shows up in our diversity of our student population, and wanting to make sure that we are being responsive to our students having a well-rounded education by having a well-rounded diversity of staff members. That does not mean that we are trying to get rid of staff members. It means that when we are hiring, we are trying to be conscientious about where we are looking and how we are selecting. So, Samia, would you like to take that?
Thank you. I would practice my public speaking skills here. Okay, as you know, I am the EL teacher at Middleton, year five. I love coming here. I don't often show up, but when I do, I'm very enthusiastic. So Teach+, I've been a member of Teach+ for the last two years. As our esteemed people and our teammates have told us, that it has been a great journey. We had difficult conversations in the beginning. We brainstormed through difficult conversations and figured out what we needed to do. And based on our work here, we have landed year two, where this is our work and goals, what we started with. And these are our three goals that we narrowed down based on our brainstorming sessions. Number one is to develop a new recruitment strategy that increases our district's profile and visibility and invites educators of color to desire our district. We want teachers of colors to come to District 73 and 1/2, and what we can do. So we are thinking, brainstorming ways, what we can do to improve our visibility. Because District 73 and 1/2, when I talk to teachers, not many people have heard of that. So we do want to make sure that we are visible. Then we are going to make sure that we design, test, adapt, and implement a culturally proficient selection process. We came upon this goal because we wanted to make sure that our teachers of color are aware that they are welcome, because our priority is welcoming. So we want to make sure that we welcome them, but we also have the tools and background knowledge to welcome them. So that's why we are going to design, test, adapt, and main word is adapt. So if it's not working, we'll keep on changing it to make it work. And number three is improve our employee proposition value to expand our focus on equity, diversity, inclusion, and belonging. That was a hard one. We spent a lot of time, Dr. Hightower, to figure out what that word proposition value meant. And we came upon this definition that proposition value is what the district offers our teacher candidates in terms of not just salary, but also other perks and benefits, that we have so many communities, good work, good people, organizations. We have other opportunities to improve our professional development, build on our skills. We don't really say that at the interview process, so we would like to make sure that we manifest that, and that's what we are going to focus on. And then that's about the three goals. Hopefully, we get to that in this year. If not, this is a work in process. Thank you.
Thank you. No. There we go. So we took these three goals then, and we built them into drivers. So we divided them out into drivers, and that was where a lot more of those kind of uncomfortable conversations happened and a lot of hard work. And our first driver was to conversations happened and a lot of hard work. And our first driver was to develop a new recruitment strategy. So we set a goal by the end of 2023, 2024, that will increase our district's profile and visibility and that invites educators of color to desire our district. So we want to be the place that everyone wants to come. We want to be the district where all teachers, whether they're first-year teachers or veteran teachers, we want to be the district that they all want to apply to. So we came up with some items that we, that were things that we can do and that we can continue to work on in the district within the committees that we already have running in our district. We didn't want our work to be done in isolation, so now it goes out to all these other committees, and these are things that we can do. And there are things that we already did, which were, you know, small things which make a change. One of them was to improve our social media and internet presence, including videos. And Sally Alvarado, who's not here right now, but, you know, she's young, and she knows, she knows what those candidates like, and just making a simple, like a one-pager. And she put it out on Twitter, and she got like 2,000 hits, like the first day that she put it out. And then people were contacting her about our district. Another one thing that we'd like to do is improve our website design and really, really focus and show off our cultural representation and the diversity that we have here in our school with our staff that we already do have, and of course, with our students. We also want to build university and educator pipeline programs. Some of these things, too, we had started before COVID happened. So there was some, I know Marty and I met with Loyola, you know, the woman from Loyola at one point, but then like COVID happened. So there was things that also were kind of in place that we had to kind of pull back on when COVID happened. So getting those, those programs where the students are coming into Middleton and McCracken and Meyer as junior and senior block students, and they can see it, and they know what a wonderful district we are. And then lastly, to investigate our Grow Your Own program. So looking at Niles North and looking at what can we do with them that makes those high school students want to become teachers and want to become to our district. So that's another thing that we want to look into.
So the second primary driver was to design, test, and adapt, and implement a culturally proficient selection process. So by the end of this upcoming school year, we want to audit and refine the district's candidate selection process, basically how we engage and bring candidates to the application itself, the interview process, and the selection process, and also the interview committee. Just to make that more streamlined, I'll kick it over to Nikki Derrick to talk more about that. So what we're going to do is, by auditing and reflecting on our current human resources process, we want to take a new look at it with an equity lens. Are we putting our best foot forward to bring in this to more diverse staff and more diverse candidates? In redesigning the interview process, I think we want to make it really more consistent. Also include an applicant survey, so we can find out what applicants to our district are looking for, what their values are, what they're looking for in the district, how they would like to be supported and developed as educators. And also to train the interviewers itself, so there's a more consistent process across the board. And then revise the interview questions and activities to include equity-centered approaches to increasing the applicant and selection pool. You know, this, I think what we found when we kind of come to the beginning of every hiring season, which is generally the late winter or spring, is we find we're diving into Google and trying to find those list of questions. We want to have this more streamlined, working with Nikki in the business office to make sure all these steps are in place, so that we're doing it the same, all three buildings, in a similar fashion, so that our candidates leave with a sense of that this was a really professional and respectful process they went through. Because really, as we know, sometimes the candidates we don't hire come back and reapply. And that's flattering, but we want them to leave with that, that image and that impression that it was a good experience for them and that they're still, we're still a desirable place to work.
So our first driver is recruiting, and our second driver is selection. The third driver is about how can we tell our story so that we can share the value added when you sign up here for our current and for our prospective employees? So like everybody said, the goal is to make people want to be here. How can we give value, obviously, there's the monetary value, but there's also the things that are the intangibles. Like we mentioned, the affinity groups, the community partnerships, which we'll talk about here, and of course, our students. And we want to make sure that those are all of, all out there for prospective candidates to come and see, and that's really the goal, is to clearly outline and share that out.
This was Sally's, but Sally's not here. So I think to see where we are in this process, you know, we are just finishing the planning and beginning the testing process. So by the end of this year, we kind of want to be midway through that implementation stage, be trying those, those first things, you know, that we're, to get feedback on it, to get feedback from our candidates. The sustaining, you know, will test us to bring in more members. I think that we'll be looking for more members across the board from each building to help this team, because, because we're taking on this type of work. So we're going to need more manpower, womanpower in that pace to get this done. So, but somewhere between planning and testing right now, it's been a great process, but I think we're all excited to see how we get to that implementation, implementation stage and see what the results are.
Any questions?
This looks great. And you know, it's obviously, we synthesized the work that we've done. And you know, whenever we have an outside group come in, I think it's always important for the community. It's paying for it to see the work that's coming out of it. So I really appreciate, I know I'm often very skeptical of those companies, so I appreciate seeing that it has meaningful change for our district. My question with stuff like this is always, what, what kind of checks, so that it doesn't fall off of our plate, what's kind of the future timeline? I mean, you did some of that, but like, you know, we will know that this is successful if what happens, or, you know, kind of looking forward.
So if then, if we continue to work through our drivers, and we continue to meet on a regular basis as we are doing, and we continue to have conversations around our interview processes and how we are actually finding which universities to partner with. And I will say that even Teach Plus gave us universities that have more demographics of diverse staff, of diverse student populations that we should be looking at, especially closer to our district. And so as long as we stay committed to this work, we will see the outcomes over time.
Thank you. So I know Ms. Gary said that there were lots of hits from the one-page of that, Ms. Esavito. Did any of that transpire into people actually applying to work here?
Don't know who actually did the hits, but we had significant applicants for our current positions.
It's, it's not uncommon that we get referrals from staff. We have a staff that really values working here. You can even see that on Facebook. They just repost other, you know, share the same posts, and usually with a tagline of, please come work with me, you know. So it's, it's really a personal. But it's not uncommon for us to, you know, to hear that someone that they know is going to be applying, whether, and that they've heard about the opening. So, so that's always good. Of course, it's, you know, they go into the candidate process like everybody else, but it's always encouraging to hear that our staff is so enthusiastic to promote working in our district, you know, that's, that's the ultimate compliment.
And so after we hire this diverse population of teachers, are we, is the next step supporting them so that they want to stay?
That's one reason for the affinity group, is to keep the teachers that we have now that are teachers of color and recognizing that they don't necessarily have colleagues on their grade level teams that have similarities as far as background and conversations. And so that was the whole point of us actually creating the affinity group, and so that once we start to attract other people, we already have systems in place that we can share. I do want to turn my focus to Ruth, who's not here for this, but was part of the tech spinoff as far as what we're trying to do. And I don't know if you want to share anything, but I don't want to not call on you, because you have been part of this, even though you weren't part of this group.
Since Marty stole my thunder. With the poster that Sally made, Ruth went ahead and tweeted it, put it on Facebook, and just by looking at the numbers, we received about 10,000 hits just by doing the poster. So she made that happen. We had a vision, and Ruth made it happen and posted it for us and kept us in the loop, and we were really excited and just kind of kept looking at the numbers. And it was pretty great to see the outcome of it. So just that one idea just went a long way. Collaboration.
Any other questions?
I have a comment followed by a question. First, my comment is everything on the primary driver, one slide is right up my alley. I love that we're investing in social media. I love that we're investing in Niles North and sort of bridging the gap between those who were once alums, or forever alums in 73 and 1/2, and inviting them to come back. I've talked a lot about even just like a tutor pipeline program, which I know doesn't fall in this purview, but just wanted an excuse to mention that. Again, that being said, these primary drivers are fantastic, but to me, they seem a little obsolete, even with some of these bullet points could, eventually, once these get flushed out, will there be numerical values attributed to these? Like, yes, X amount of applicants for Y amount of postings is success. I just feel like having that measurable component is something that's missing right now.
Yes, we will measure our data. Right now, we are still in the higher frame of, let's get all of these sequentially set up, and then absolutely, there will be data points.
Yeah, I think you just said what I was kind of trying to say, but you said it a lot better. I think, I think, you know, we are very good at like coming up with action plans and following them, but I think this is such good work and so important that I want to make sure we're reporting out on it and sharing it with the community as well in a year or so.
I have a couple of questions as well. As far as affinity groups, first of all, awesome. That is such a great idea. I wanted to ask, is it district-wide? So can, do all the teachers or staff from the district meet, or is it building?
It's district-wide. I'm even on it.
Okay, great. And just kind of as a general question, how many applications do we receive typically? Do we have numbers on that? I'm just curious, because I know we live in a very different world right now with education, and I know it's challenging, but I'm curious how often people, how many people are actually applying here?
It really depends on the position. So there's no exact number. If you could give me a job number, I could give you the number of applicants, but other than that, there's not really one or the other. It just depends, unfortunately.
And then one of the things that I understood we were saying is that if somebody doesn't get selected for a position, we definitely want them to come back and apply again. So are we, let's say we get 1,000 applications. Are we getting back to every single applicant and saying, thank you so much, we appreciate your application at this time we found somebody? Or are we responding to every single person that's applying? Or are we kind of, I know it's a challenge.
We weren't, but that is the goal. We're doing frontline training on that right now, to be able to just mass email, to let them know, we've gotten your application, and thank you for applying, but we're not going to be accepting you at this time, or we're not looking at applications at this time. That's one of my big goals for next year.
We found that it is a function, but it wasn't a function that we've been trained on. Thank you. All right, thank you so much. Thank you. Our next presentation will be a strategic plan presentation on data for the last calendar school, last school year. So we are going to do our year-end review, and there will be data. For our priority one, welcoming invite, that's you, that's not me.
All right, so we are going to review our progress on the strategic goals that we set and kind of help you understand what our baseline is and how we're going to move forward. So with welcoming environment, I don't have the clicker. Oh, thank you. Okay, so our success indicators for welcoming environment, things, changes that we've made this year that have moved us forward. Thanks to Ruth again, a shout out. We have a revised weekly newsletter that's much easier to understand for our parents. Everything's in one spot. It's much more accessible. It gets tweeted and emailed out, as you all know. In addition, we have an updated website. Again, shout out to Ruth Sinker. We have a strategic planning page. And in addition, for families that may be considering Skokie 73 and 1/2 as a, you know, a home for their, for their families, we have a prospective families page. So it kind of highlights like things that are unique to us, things that might draw parents in, just kind of gives them an overview and highlight of the district and how we function. We continue to have interpreters in all parent meetings. That includes registration. It includes parent conferences, IUPs, 504s, strategic planning conferences, really, you name it, anything where we are inviting the community in. We also have interpreters there to make sure that everyone can participate meaningfully. And then we have our coffee with the superintendent meetings where parents can come in and share whatever's on their mind with Dr. Hightower and talk through some of the concerns that they might have. All right. And this gets at our specific goal, our measurable goal, as Dr. Hightower alluded to. So our goal was to have 80% of, 80% of students report that they have a trusted adult that they can turn to, who will help them regardless of the situation. We say that it's reported as of the five essentials, but really what we did was we captured the Panorama survey results, because it encompasses more of our students and it's more comprehensive. And so if you look, this is each grade level, this is the student report survey. So students reporting on how they feel about the school and the environment and supports in the school. So the numbers indicate the number of student respondents. I will say that we had, for every survey that we give in Panorama, we have 95% or higher students that actually respond. So this was our fall baseline data. In the blue shows students that responded favorably. So they did feel like they have, had a trusted adult. And then in the lighter color up top, we have the number of students that reported that they did not. And I don't know why 8th grade's not here. I looked it up real quick before I jumped up here. It was 90 students reported that they did, and then 10 did not. So as you can see on the spring results over on the right of your screen, every single grade level jumped in terms of students that reported that they had a trusted adult. So I think that this is just a really great way that we use the Panorama data to make improvements and make sure that students feel connected to our school environment. Any questions about welcoming environment? Wonderful.
I do have a quick question. Are we reporting in numbers or percentages in these bars?
These are just number, the numbers of students per grade level. So if you add up like the 78 and 11, that's the, the number of students in 3rd grade that reported.
Okay, so 18%, let's say, in 6th grade reported, so, I'm sorry, 18 students, individual students.
Yes, yes, and that will become important next year. The other thing I will say is that Dan was nice enough to put this bar, which kind of indicates what our trend line was.
So priority two, hiring and retention. We had a lofty goal of retaining 100% of our highly qualified staff. And we focused on our district initiatives in doing so. And so our new teacher training mentoring, our targeted professional development, our staff feedback opportunities such as our survey with the SSVCC, our five essentials report, as well as the work that we're doing with Teach Plus. And so for our data points, we have retained 92.31% of our district administrators. percent of our district administrators, ninety-seven and seventy-five percent of our district licensed teachers, ninety-two point eighty-six percent of our school support personnel, and ninety-three point seventy-five percent of our confidential staff. Any questions? I was like, I think I made this one.
What, um, sorry, quick question. Uh, when you said, uh, your goal was to meet, to retain a hundred percent of our highly qualified staff, is that just like a, is that a specific, what's highly qualified?
Highly qualified staff has to do with evaluations. It has to do with, did we identify a teacher that was not serving our students properly and that we wanted them to exit? So that wouldn't show up in our number.
Okay, so I, yeah, I was just wondering how that would, how we would show if we had met that or not on this slide here. So, yeah.
And what is confidential staff?
Confidential staff are staff members that cannot be part of the teachers' union nor the, um, our parents' union. And so they fall into confidential because they come into information that cannot be shared.
All right. So we'll look at some of the instructional goals that we had as a district. We'll start with reading. So this year for our district goals, we wanted seventy-five percent of our kindergarten and first grade students to read at or above grade level as measured by F and P, and then fifty-five percent of our students will meet their growth target on reading in second through eighth grade. And so what you see here is the data in percentages of our students that meet or are within a standard deviation of meeting their growth target. Remember, meeting a standard deviation is that if they were to take the assessment again, it's likely that they could or not meet. And so you want to understand where our students are, that this is a snapshot in time. So our goal here was fifty-five percent. You'll see that in some places we met the goal and some places we did not, but came very close. Um, one thing to, um, think about is that where we have our lowest growth ra, rates, those also coincide with national norms of what is going on post-pandemic. So we are right in line in recovery from COVID of, with our national peers. Also looking at this, we want to look at some of our, um, different ethnic and racial groups. And so again, we want to monitor, make sure that we are not missing any of our students. And so you'll see in some places, again, there are places where we had phenomenal growth, um, and there are places where we need to work differently potentially and really think about what are the things that we can do. And some of that goes to the data that, um, Angela shared about making sure that students are, have somebody that they can go to and feel safe. Likewise, um, we, our goal was to get seventy-five percent of our kindergarten and first grade students reading at or above grade level. When you look at this graph, you're going to want to take the blue and teal. These are different colors when I do it on the computer. Yeah. So the blue and teal are what you want to bring together because the teal is meeting the goal and our, um, blue on the top is that what exceeds the goal. Couple of things to think about here when we're looking at our youngest learners. Right here in the fall, which you don't see, we see on historically over the last two and three, two years, about eighty percent of students come to us as non-readers. So when you think about where kids go from being a non-reader in the fall of kindergarten to sixty-seven percent of students at the end of kindergarten, reading at or above grade level, and then here having, uh, sixty-five percent of students reading at or above grade level, that's an amazing feat when you think of that. And so even though we didn't hit our goal, we need to be really proud of the work that we're doing here in District Seventy-three and a Half. And then also, as you consider those students in the yellow, those are the students that are just right there, just right there. And maybe next year, they're going to be in the blue and teal. And again, we want to look at this in terms of our ethnicity groups. Again, there are places where we have started to really connect with our students, uh, and there are places where we need to think about how can we connect kids to reading and connect kids to books. And so there are opportunities for us to think about in the future when we're looking at some of these things. Also is thinking about how do we work with our multilingual students and how do we work with our diverse learners? And then we get into our math goals. Oh, should we go back? Are there questions about any of the reading goals?
Um, I just have a couple of questions. Uh, the first one is, uh, we set fifty-five percent as the goal. Uh, I know that often like MAPS says like fifty percent is sort of what they recommend was our, what was our choice to go fifty-five percent. Can you talk, talk me through that choice?
Sure. Last spring, um, in the reading, uh, goal, fifty-three percent of our students met their growth target. So we're like, okay, let's go two percent more. Um, but you are correct. That MAP does say like fifty percent of your students, you're doing well. Fifty-five percent of your students, you're doing really well as a district. Um, it's sort of like what, um, Dr. Hightower was saying with the, um, hiring and retention. Like you aim for the moon and even if you miss, you're among the stars. And that's where we are.
Thank you. I think it's just important to clarify for people who don't spend their lives looking at MAP data that, that fifty percent seems low, but fifty percent is the recommended that they, yeah.
People don't do that? So give me a spreadsheet, man.
Not everyone's as fun.
I, I, I think it's great. Give me a spreadsheet. I'm ready. All right. So math, any other questions on reading? For math, we had, um, yeah. Yes, shout out. And that's what I'm saying. Like, our kids come to us in kindergarten, eighty pers, seventy-five to eighty percent of them are non-readers. And to get them to this point where sixty-five percent of them are reading at or above grade level is a feat of the greatest. And no, this is about teaching. And I think what's really exciting about that, just as an aside, um, is with our literacy work that we're doing, um, we have a brand-new, uh, foundational literacy program that's going to be implemented in the fall. And so those numbers, we should see even an uptick in that. And so this is without a comprehensive foundational literacy program, um, that we're using. So kudos to those teachers. Go ahead. You already asked. I, we could. Yeah, we could definitely.
Good questions are allowed.
For this presentation, we didn't, but for, um, our district dashboard, we have the ability to divide it into income. Um, we have income, diverse learners, EL status, ethnicity, um, and then we also added ELP status, uh, for our extended learning program this year. So for math, um, you know, we have a goal for second to eighth grade. The idea is that, you know, our second to eighth graders stand on the shoulder of giants, that our pre-K, K, and one teachers are doing amazing work and that shows up in the data as kids move through our system. Um, and so we have a goal of sixty percent of our students meeting their growth target in math. Uh, I was just reading a report from NWA because that's what I do. Um, and it was kind of aligned with what our data we're seeing here in that fourth and fifth grade have really taken the biggest hit and math has taken the biggest hit in this post-pandemic world. Um, and so we have work to do, um, in math for some of our students in terms of meeting their growth targets, accelerating their learning to get to grade level content. Again, we looked sort of to preempt your question there, Maureen. Um, last year, we looked at fifty-eight percent of our students were meeting their growth target. So that's why we hit six, had sixty as our goal. We're like, let's kick it up two more. Again, you'll see there are places where we have met the goal and we'll see there are places that we're almost there. And that's why we add the within one standard deviation. And likewise, we look at this for our race and ethnicity groups. Again, you'll see there are places where we have opportunities to mentor students and to ensure that all students are getting access to grade level content.
Can we go back to the slide before here?
Of course.
What happened in fifth grade? Did I miss that?
So, um, fourth and fifth grade, but fifth grade in particular, um, was, if you kind of go back in time to where the pandemic hit, these were those students who, uh, missed the opportunity for key hands-on learning in numeracy. And so we're starting to see the, the, what happens in that post-pandemic world. So we have some work to do of how do we fill in some of those gaps for our students. Again, kind of aligned with the, what's happening on the national level. This is not, this is not uncommon for the national level. We are performing in line with our peers, at least our peers who are taking NWA MAP.
Can you go to the next slide?
Of course.
So one thing that I'm noticing, and obviously there's not enough data here to draw a hard, you know, causation, but it looks like the growth, uh, projection is, is better, is more equal, um, with the reading than it is with the math, which is like the opposite of what you would expect to see. So part of me says, why? Um, part of me is also wondering if you think that any of that is attributed to the literacy work that we've been doing because to my memory, it also looks more equal than it did two years ago. So I guess my question would be, have you looked into that historically to see if there's anything worth sort of flagging there?
I think it's something to consider from a, from a personal standpoint. Like, it's always nice as a teacher when I can focus on something. And that's why we have our, like, our curriculum revision cycles because we know that at like a kindergarten to fifth grade teacher lens, right? If we tried to do reading and math at the same time, their head spins and we don't do anything great. Um, and so we are in the midst, like you say, of a literacy review, a, a really big literacy review. And we're starting to see and reap the benefits of that. And we will be moving into, our teachers are already talking about, what are some things that we can do? We've had, you know, whether it's moving to the newest version of Eureka Math or finding something different altogether. That's on the docket. Um, but we have to be cognizant of how does that play out with our teachers and I'm sure you can understand. So it's possible. Um, it's something that we can consider. Um, I hope that the evenness in literacy is because we focused on providing professional development and mentoring with our literacy program. Um, it's something to consider for moving forward. Thank you.
And I think it's also just worth highlighting that the work that we did around literacy was specifically around equity and, and that we do see, you know, so, and I think it's a little bit more obvious about how to do that with reading than it is with math. You know, I think people think math is, you know, doesn't need that. Well, it does. So I, I appreciate the lens that we looked at the literacy work with, and I hope it can use that same equity lens for the math work.
I hope so too, and I think we can. So just as like an aside, just kind of some of the things that we can highlight, you know, we've been talking to you about literacy all year. We have our new literacy vision and we've shared with you at the last board meeting, um, the student portrait. Um, we've talked about our foundational literacy resource for implementation. Kudos to our teachers, by the way, who are, who did really great work in research, um, of their rubric and really took a deep understanding of what they wanted out of a program, but also that they're doing the professional development over the summer. We've given them professional, um, flexible learning opportunities for the new res, resource so they can hit the ground running. They're virtual and they've, they've all just come out and eager to participate. Obviously, we'll have our, Sadler is our, uh, literacy resource, uh, provider and we're hoping to have a very special guest next year. Um, and then obviously with our, the educator collaborative, which was very well received by, um, our teachers. And then we have our MTSS processes implementing our new data system for the fall of twenty-twenty-three. And then, like I said, jumping into that math work as soon as humanly possible, um, you know, obviously we'll have some changes in the CIA department next year, so.
Thank you so much, Dan. Any other questions?
I do have a question.
Yeah.
If we can go back to slide four.
Do you know what that slide is?
That's the one that eighty percent of students report they have a trusted adult. So I'm, I'm really pleased to see that from twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three, we see an improvement. But to me, each child, like I would love to see zero, right? That every single child feels connected to, because to me, even if it was one, it still worries me because if you're the parent of that child, you want that child connected. And so I'm wondering what we're doing, how we're connecting to those children. What, what are we doing that's making this great change? And how do we get to a hundred?
So glad you asked. Um, so as you probably know, we met as an administrative team, um, three days last week and just, it was last week, right? Yeah. It's all a blur. Um, and we did talk about exactly that, like identifying the children, you know, those eleven students that are here and those seven students that are here and doing more of a dial-in and having a plan for assigning a mentor, doing check-ins, whatever that child needs. And that will be individual for each child, um, as the teachers know them best and will develop a plan. But it really is going to be dialing in and identifying those children and making sure that they feel connected and that we provide opportunities for that.
One thing that Panorama gives us the opportunity to do is to also look at these results normed against national results, correct? So I think to your, to your question, I think it's also helpful to think about, you know, seeing what is the typical sig, are we, are we, where are we lining up against how sixth graders feel across the board? Because I mean, just thinking about middle school students where we see that dip, there is significant social, emotional things that are probably going to prohibit you from ever getting to zero, a hundred, but I think seeing it compared to the national norms is really meaningful.
And we are very high when compared to the national average. I believe we're at the ninetieth percentile.
So through Panorama, we're able to identify those children and support them.
We are, yeah. Great question. Any other question?
Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Now we have the superintendent's update. Oh, just as a reminder, all the administrative updates are in the board packet, so we won't be going through all the details of every single one. Um, if you can just give us highlights and then we'll move on to the next person.
Of all the things that I want to highlight, I do just want to acknowledge all of the people that assisted us with our CIA interview. Um, this was no small feat and we had a significant amount of teachers and staff and board members helping us out. And so I do want to thank, and I'm going to read their names because I accidentally left some people's names off of one of my reports. And I do not want anyone to think that I was not definitely, um, excited to have each one of the members on our team. And I do want to talk about the fact that they advocated to be on the interview committee and these were some long days. And so I want to thank them specifically. And so the members of our team for the selection of our CIA director are Angela Demay, Helen Way, Christine Paulson, Lila Nissan, Nikki Tamaru, Nancy Ariola, Laura Williams, Lynn Tucker, Sarah Berkey, who is the one that let me know that I had left significant people off. So thank you, Sarah. Where did I leave off? Here I am. Uh, Lynn Katanis, Whitney Kamikas, Rachel Douglas, Abra Siegler, Amanda Dunnekin, Ann Bond, Abby Harris Rittker, Lillian Solomon, Maureen Jacob, and Karen Hess. We can't thank you enough for your time.
Thank you. Let's do student services update.
Before we move on, can I just make a quick comment? Um, I, I just wanted to personally thank Dan for working with us for the last few years. And we really have enjoyed having you here and will be, um, you will be missed. Um, so we appreciate all of the work that you've done. Thank you.
And we definitely wish you the best.
I did not really have anything to add unless you had questions for me.
Thank you. Let's move on to the curriculum instruction and assessment update. Nothing. Just refer to the packet, uh, facilities update.
Everything's going good. We're off to a good start. All the furniture at McCracken's moved out. Um, actually, almost every classroom's already been shampooed. Actually, almost every classroom's already been shampooed. And then the garage is going good, except for we ran into a problem, which is going to delay us about two to three weeks because the surveyor had the ComEd electrical off. It wasn't correctly yep. And then the sewers aren't properly located where he thought they were. So there's a meeting with ComEd on Thursday to get this going. And we're also looking at Green and Associates to help out with reimbursement of that surveyor.
Thank you so much. Technology update? All right. Financial update?
Okay, I'm not going to say too much. We closed, we have one more month left where we won't have the board meeting, but we'll retroactively approve those expenditures and revenues, the payables in August. Currently, right now, if you guys have my report in your hand, we are, I think it's 92.5%, 95% through the year. So we have only a little 5% left. We came in, let me pull up my report just so I can get the exact numbers right. So we're 95% through the year, and our revenues, we have collected 92.92%. So pretty close on that estimate that we made. And also for our expenditures, we're 95% through the year, but we are 82.91% with our expenditures. So we're a little under budget. That under budget is actually going to be the extra money for the maintenance garage, and that's going to be part of tonight's ask is that we move that money from O and M, where it's at risk to be appealed. And we're going to place it in capital projects where it is a capital project. And that would have put us, I think it'll put us like about 101% of our expenditures, which is not too shabby. One thing I want to mention is that we do not need an amendment, and we're this close. So I'm very proud of that work.
Thank you, Sam. District space needs.
No. So we are going to be working within the Finance, Safety, and Infrastructure Committee, which is going to be one of our new strategic committees with various stakeholders. And some of the committee members are going to be our union presidents from both the IFT and from McMia. And we're going to work to find the solutions and to find what are our biggest areas of concern and start to lay out those plans together.
That's great. Thank you. When, I assume we'll get like report back at this this spot in the board meeting? Okay, all right. Great, thank you. Annual safety review, school year 2022-23.
So this one was done with, I think it was Priya was present? So this is just, yeah, this is our annual review where we meet with the fire department and the police department just to go over some of our processes, and everything was fine. And so that you'll see in the packet as well.
Thank you. Our next item is the new district logo, which anyone watching can see in our board packet. Or you're going to see it right now.
Can you hear me now?
Actually, there's four because one of them is usually me. So.
Ruth, can I? What, did you want to introduce? We're channeling Emily, who's not here today, our board president. And we just want to say that our district logo is coming into play now because of our new strategic plan. And so as we started the strategic plan, we thought, wow, great time to actually do some rebranding. And so now I will give it over to Ruth to explain.
Hi, I'm Ruth, and I'm going to explain our new logo. We, the district decided to create a new logo, as Dr. Hightower explained. So we worked with a local designer to conceptualize our district visually in a way that represents our students, our schools, our district, our staff, and our faculty. Now, when you look at the logo, it is what it is. But when you read the statement of concept, I don't know if you've read it, but I want to read it out loud because it really pulls it together. The half circle represents the district, the half in 73 and a half, with the three inner circles representing the three schools, innermost being Meyer, with the second and third circles gradually opening, representing the growth of the students themselves and their education, i.e., opening their minds through education. The additional rings extending from the district half circle represent the support of students by district administration, staff, and faculty throughout their education. So when you look at the when you look at the design itself and you see the green cradling the school colors, this particular version of the logo, the two, the Skokie 735 and the empty circle, this is designed to rotate student artwork in and out. So we already have a selection of art. Michelle Beatrice worked with the fifth graders. If any of you have fifth graders who came home saying they were working on a top-secret project, that was it. Also, the seventh graders worked with Bill Macbeth and his student teacher to do the same thing. They they worked it into a project where they studied what logos are. And we have a selection of artwork that will be digitized by the designer so that we can swap it in and out for special occasions. The lower logo with the 73.5 in the middle, this is for us to use when the district identity is either stated or implied by the content where it sits. For example, if we have a Middleton Bulldogs t-shirt that focuses on Middleton, we can put this logo on the sleeve to represent the district as the parent entity. Same thing with like a yearbook, where the focus of the content is the school, but the school is part of the district. So these are them. I am very excited. I know Emily was very excited. And you may or may not notice this, but the green, we are changing the green on our website now. We have a very dark forest green. We worked diligently with the designer to pick a district color, and Emily picked that one. So these, this is our logo. We're very excited about it. It still needs some, the designer needs to do some cleanup work on it, but she took off and went to Germany for a couple of weeks. So when she comes back, then we'll be ready to take next steps.
Thank you. I think that the student-centered element of putting the students' work in there is inspired. It's great.
I'll pass that on to Denise.
All right. Any future possible agenda items or other discussion items we wanted to add?
We had a couple you guys wanted an update on from last time. Do you want me to do that now?
That sounds like a great idea.
So the tort issue from last time, we talked about the fund balance being low, and you see that in here. That's going to be resolved tonight with our abatement from working cash to tort, and so that should rectify that. We're going to work with our levy next year to make sure that we're levying the appropriate amount for each of our funds, and so we shouldn't have any more problems going forward. I can't give a full update until next month on the transportation issues, but I can give a partial update right now and then give a full one next month. So we are working on solutions for what happens if there's a late bus. One of the issues that was very important that we identified is some students don't have a phone. Sometimes they won't have the phone number home, and that causes an issue. And so what we're going to do is we're going to put administration and adults, including our operational service coordinator, who knows when there's late buses, in charge of making sure that every student, checking that every student has called home, and that if they have not, we're assisting them in doing that. So that's just a step one. We are also looking at some non-CDL-required small buses, and we've we've found those to be affordable and reasonable. Biggest issue is where to park them because we have no space, but we're going to make it happen. And so that's something that I'll report more on next month. Any questions for you guys on those?
I mean, just once again, thank you for thinking creatively about our transportation problem. We had also discussed adding a future agenda item around, I think we could all use clarity and just some bringing together just and communication to the community as well around what restorative practice looks like. And we've done that before, but I think, you know, kind of just being really explicit with it, I think would be helpful at a future meeting.
And I think part of the report that Angela had, I noticed that we did hire somebody, so I'm really excited about that because obviously it's a huge project, a huge undertaking, and it requires not just the district, not just the kids, but it also requires the community to be involved and understand truly what restorative practices mean. So thank you for that, and I think we're really excited to see what next year looks like.
Anything else? All right, we're going to move on to board committee reports and outside organization board representative reports, starting with the Equity Committee.
So the Board Equity Committee, which comprises of myself, Vice President Nelson, and Dr. Hightower, we met in the beginning of June, and there was a lot that we talked about when it comes to the transformation of our Equity Committee and how it coexists with what Delta was at one point and now what Delta is going to turn into. So we talked about a couple of goals and what we want equity from a parent's standpoint, such as what we want parents and community members to do with us, how you want them to engage with us, how you want them to communicate the work that we're doing, and what things that we can change and continue to work towards. Dr. Hightower, if I missed anything, feel free to jump in. Not really missed anything, but just really wanting to hear the voices of our parents as far as what things they are interested in, be it being educational or just practice, and what does equity truly mean within our district.
Thank you. We got an update from the Board Policy Committee, Becky?
Yes, so we met on April 25th, May 23rd. And the last meeting, just to go through a couple of last-minute policies, was on the 7th of June, which I was unable to attend. So thank you, Mari and Louis, for making that happen. I wanted to also give a special thank you to Nikki for really keeping us focused and making sure that we're making the timelines and the deadlines. So lots of different policies that we are going to have a second read on today, and we're going to vote on and approve. It's really just a great journey. And I also wanted to always invite the community and just remind everybody that policy meetings are public. You're welcome to attend. If you have any suggestions, questions, we always love to hear from others. So thank you.
I don't know if this is appropriate, but, and I'll say but, for our parents that actually came this evening, I would invite them to come to our policy meeting so that we can look at policy and really talk about our next steps for our schools.
Yes, they're definitely open to the public, and we don't have any on the calendar right now. But please keep an eye out. We will have more. We just completed this packet, so there will be another packet coming in. And we will definitely be addressing policies. We do want to hear from the community.
Thank you. We got an EdRed update, Busher?
It will be Busher.
So I'm excited to share that as of this Monday, I got appointed to the Executive Committee, which is super fun. So last week on Monday, we had our member meeting where the superintendent of Illinois came and talked a bit about what some of the prioritizations that he has coming out of this session, along with his most recent meeting with the governor, which sounded really fancy, but was a little bit of jargon and which is also very important to just hear and be aware of and mindful of. That being said, there were a couple of EdRed initiatives that passed and came out of committee updates. So one of them was the 10-year dismissal hearing in student protections, which was one that ensured there would be protections in place for students who may have had any sort of repercussions with the teacher so they don't have to sit there and view their predator in front of people in a hearing. So that was really interesting and one that I'm glad, one that people were in favor of. They had a school safety committee, special education committee, and a bunch of summer projects that we're working on. And we're not meeting again until September, which is also our board retreat. But in August, on August 3rd, we have EdRed's first legislative breakfast. So definitely feel free to attend. It'll be in Wheeling.
Thank you. We got updates on NTDSC, Member Nelson?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. PTO update?
Sorry. I was in a meeting with the Cub Scout master, talking about Cub Scouts before I came here. He happens to be my husband, so it worked out really well. We could just do it at our table. Also, they will be seeking recruitment opportunities for scouts for the coming years, so just so you know. PTO is what I'm here about, though. I, we finished out our end-of-year activities that we had, our teacher appreciations, our Meyer Bash. They were all really successful. We enjoyed them. Kids enjoyed them. That's a big part of what we do. So we have closed out that year, that year, last year. And we have plans for the coming year. So we spent, like it was a week or two after our last event that we sat down and we came up with a tentative calendar for the fall that we are going to present to Dr. Hightower in the next weeks or so as her team begins to work on the calendar so that potentially our events can be incorporated, so that we're not overlapping each other on event dates and months and weeks. So that is coming, so we'll do that. And then we always need more volunteers. So if people are interested in volunteering, you can see me. And there is a, I'm going to get it wrong, somebody help me. There are going to be Fridays on Main Street. But are they, is that what they're calling it?
Yes, yeah.
Are they calling it Fridays on Main Street?
Meetup on Main.
Meetup on Main, that's what it is. Sorry. The next five Fridays. So Meetup on Main, and the PTO is going to have a table at those where we're going to be meeting new families in our district as well and having sign-ups and having information about events. So for the next five Fridays, there'll be a table there as well because we want to get things out to the community, and we'd love to see Main Street get developed. So that's all I've got. Any questions?
No, and just to reiterate. It's, oh.
Five to seven?
Five to eight.
Oh, five to eight.
And it's right by the CBS and the Geetha Foods, right there.
Yes.
Just wanted to make a quick comment. Karen, who we all know is part of PTO, but she also works at this district, but she also just completed her.
Master's degree?
Master's degree. So she is amazing, so we should congratulate her. And thank you for all the work, considering how much work you're doing, plus PTO, plus completing your master. So congratulations on that.
Thanks. All right, let's get an update from the Finance Committee.
We, so we did have a meeting. We talked about in the Finance Committee, the MOU for Niles Township, which we're about to talk about in our action items. And we talked about having extra funds from the furniture project, which was an amazing thing that we did by leveraging vendors and making them work together and then just being very wise. We actually were able to get way more furniture than we expected and still have this money left over. And then we talked about the admin cap, which you'll talk about, which we'll see as well. And then we talked about the abatement and some of the fund balances.
Thank you. Governance Committee, we didn't meet, all right. Is this a motion? Do we need a motion for the, a motion to approve policy for adoption?
I move that we approve policy for adoption.
Second. Motion made by Member Mercer, seconded by Member Wolfinger. Can I vote? Any questions? Looks like no. Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson?
Yes.
Member Mercer?
Yes.
Member Wolfinger?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
All right, on to new business. I need a motion to approve the personnel report.
I move to approve the personnel report.
Second.
Motion made by Member Mercer, seconded by Member Nelson. Any questions? Oh, there's no discussion on the personnel report, right? All right, let's vote. Member Mercer?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Wolfinger?
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson?
Yes.
Personnel report passes. I need a motion to, nominations are now in order for the vacant office of secretary. Are there any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Busher Amawala for the role position of secretary.
Second.
If there are no further nominations, nominations for the office of secretary are closed. Busher Amawala being the only candidate nominated for the office of secretary. I hereby declare the member elected by acclamation to serve the two-year term as such and directs the recording secretary to record this in the minutes. All right. I need a motion to approve the waiver of the administrative cost limitations for the fiscal year 23 budget as presented.
I move that we approve the waiver of administrative cost limitations for the fiscal year 23 budget as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Member Nelson, seconded by Member Amawala. Any discussion? Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Wolfinger?
Yes.
Member Mercer?
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson?
Yes.
Member Amawala?
Yes.
And, do I have to say that it passes every time? Motion passes, okay. I need a motion to approve the Workers' Compensation Insurance Carrier Contract, School Year 23-24.
I'll make a motion to approve Workers' Compensation Insurance Carrier Contract, School Year 23-24.
Second.
Motion made by Member Amawala, seconded by Member Nelson. Any discussion, questions? Member Wolfinger?
Yes.
Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Mercer?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes. I need a motion to approve the disposal of outdated and broken technology supplies and equipment as described in the memo.
I move that we approve the disposal of outdated and broken technology supplies and equipment as described in the memo.
Second.
Motion made by Member Nelson, seconded by Member Amawala. Can I, any questions? All right, we can roll. We can do a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. I need a motion to approve the resolution to abate working cash to the Torth Fund as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to abate working cash to the Torth Fund as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Member Amawala, seconded by Member Mercer. Any discussion? All right, ready to vote? Yes. Member Mercer?
Yes.
Member Wolfinger?
Yes.
Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. I need a motion to approve the resolutions to transfer funds as presented.
I move that we approve the resolutions to transfer funds as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Member Nelson, seconded by Member Mercer. Any questions? This is a continuation of the kind of the second, the last thing, correct?
Yeah, it's the MOU and then moving the O and M money to the capital projects.
All right, thank you. I can call the roll. Member Nelson?
Yes.
Member Mercer?
Yes.
Member Wolfinger?
Yes.
Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Motion passes. I need a motion to, for, how do I, for the retirement agreement and release with educational support personnel. Oh, I need a motion to approve retirement agreement and release with Christian Kuplinsky for a retirement date effective June 18th, 2023.
I'll make a motion to approve retirement agreement and release with Christian Kuplinsky with a retirement date effective June 18th, 2023.
Motion made by Member Amawala, seconded by Member Nelson. Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Wolfinger?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Member Mercer?
Yes.
Motion passes. I need a motion to approve the new district logo.
I make a motion to approve the new district logo.
Second.
Motion made by Member Wolfinger, seconded by Member Amawala. Any discussion? Great. All in favor? Any abstentions? Any opposed? It passes. I need a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement for Niles Township from July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024, in the amount of $20,000.
I move that we approve the intergovernmental agreement for Niles Township from July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024, in the amount of $20,000.
Second.
Motion made by Member Mercer, seconded by Member Wolfinger. Do we have any discussion or clarification?
We have some visitors here, so maybe we just give them a moment to talk about the benefits to our community.
Hi, I am Bonnie Khan Agnesani. I am the Supervisor of Niles Township Government. And first and foremost, I just wanna thank the Board for considering an intergovernmental agreement between our two entities in support of low-wealth students in your district and to try and achieve greater equity, which even, you know, I already know this school district really well, and I know that is a value of yours. Sitting through this meeting tonight, those values were reiterated time and time again. So, thank you for that as well. Our Director of General Assistance and Social Work, who administers the program, Ruth Orm Johnson, is also here. She is really the expert and the person on the ground who is working directly with families that are coming to us with needs. I'd like to give her a moment.
Hi, everyone. I'm sorry I introduced myself, Nikki, as though you had something to do with the administration of all. You just looked so professional when you walked in. And she came in and said, "Hi," and she said, "Hi."
She does. She's our HR coordinator.
You're great. She looks like she owns the place. So, I'm the Director of Social Services. As you likely know, we have intergovernmental agreements with District 68 and 219. Those relationships have been great. They started during the pandemic as a way to alleviate the significant, primarily rent, but also utility needs among the families and communities in those specific districts. Our bread and butter is providing financial assistance for families who are in dire straits and emergency situations. And so, since we already had that expertise and there was a significant need, it's easy making that relationship. We're excited to enter into that with you all as well. The rental assistance, so when we, I have a couple of reports for either of those districts. If you're interested in reading them, I know all of us need is more paperwork to look through. But it is a nice description of how those relationships have worked and a little bit about what we've been able to accomplish. Approximately 88% of the funds that we disperse are for rent relief. So, that really is a huge need in these communities. And what we're able to do is not just meet families where they are and take care of the issue right now, but hopefully provide them assistance moving forwards, that they're able to remain stable in their homes during the school year, so that their children are able to be successful at school, and they're able to focus on their studies and be present here when they're here. And not worry as much about whether or not Mom and Dad are gonna be able to keep the lights on or stay where they are and stay in school. So, yeah, we're interested in hearing from you about any questions you have about how we use these funds, any thoughts about how we, you know, determine qualifications, anything like that. And open door, absolutely, if you have any thoughts or if you have any reports you'd like to see.
I was wondering.
Go ahead.
I would like to add that while the majority of the requests that come to us are for rent relief and to keep utilities on, which also is a form of eviction prevention and keeping those students in district, which we know is extremely valuable in their success, a good portion of that money also goes towards childcare needs, which alleviates the need for older children to be saddled and burdened with the responsibility of watching through their younger peers so that they can really put their energy into their educational success. We also can use that money to support families and medical expenses, including mental and behavioral health, and even tutoring. So, it's a really wide range. Some of those things would be determined by a letter from the school district asking for support. We really lean on the school district to put us in touch with some of the families, although there is, I would say, like, there's getting to be considerable knowledge throughout the community that the IGAs exist. And the support that we really see is life-changing and phenomenal. So, again, thank you for considering. I think that Member Wolfinger had a question for us.
Not really a question, but I was hoping that you can talk a little bit about how this IGA specifically helps some of our undocumented families who cannot get the assistance without the IGA, correct?
Oh, what a softball. So, a lot of government assistance is relegated to people based on their status in this country. And so, this frees that up and is no longer a question that we even have to ask on the application. I can just take you at your word that you're here. You can prove that you're registered in the school. That's what matters to me. I don't have to be concerned with your immigration status. And that is also a huge stress relief for a lot of families who I think are very scared to ask for this assistance. Yeah.
Thank you so much for coming out and for waiting so long, and we really appreciate it, all that you're doing for our community. Thank you. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right, I think we're ready to call the roll. Member Wolfinger?
Yes.
Member Mercer?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Can, we have a motion to approve the Administrator Employment Contract for the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Kevin Paduska, for School Year 23-24.
I'll make a motion to approve Administrator Employment Contract for Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Kevin Paduska, for SY 2023 through 24.
Second.
Motion made by Member Wolfinger, seconded by Member Nelson. Do we have any questions? All right, call the roll. Member Nelson? Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Wolfinger?
Yes.
Member Mercer?
Yes.
Motion passes. I need a motion to approve tuition reimbursement priorities for School Year 23-24.
I make a motion that we approve tuition reimbursement priorities for School Year 2023 to 2024.
Second.
Motion made by Member Nelson, seconded by Member Amawala. Any questions? All right, if you can call the roll. Thanks, Alex. This will be a voice vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes. I need a motion to approve the one-year contract with WhipFlee. Am I saying that correct? Okay. For fiscal audit services for fiscal year 23 as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the one-year contract with WhipFlee for fiscal audit services for FY 23 as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Member Amawala, seconded by Member Wolfinger. Any questions? All right. Member Wolfinger?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Member Mercer?
Yes.
Motion passes. I need a motion to approve the lease of new copiers.
I make a motion to approve the lease of new copiers to replace end-of-life equipment at all schools.
Second.
Motion made by Member Wolfinger, seconded by Member Nelson. Any questions?
I guess I would ask what the financial benefit would be of leasing versus purchasing.
Specifically for copiers of this size, the cost of these is so much. And by the end of the five-year term, you're getting almost nothing back from these. And so, to help lessen that cost, we go with a fair market value instead of trying to buy them out, because ultimately, what we have are 200-pound paperweights. And there's just not a lot of value in them after that to make it worth our while to own it.
Thank you. Any other question? All right, call the roll. Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Wolfinger?
Yes.
Member Mercer?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Member Amawala?
Yes.
Motion passes. Can I have a motion to approve the list of fees and fines to waive?
I move that we approve list of fees and fines to waive.
Second.
Motion made by Member Mercer, seconded by Member Nelson. Any questions? All right. Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Mercer?
Yes.
Member Wolfinger?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes. I need a motion to approve the 2023-2024 Student Parent Handbook.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2023-2024 Student Parent Handbook.
Second.
Motion made by Member Amawala, seconded by Member Mercer. Any questions, or? Member Wolfinger?
I do have a quick question before you take a vote. I know that we had an issue with some of the information in the handbook not aligning with policy. I just wanted to make sure that we've changed it, because I know we've had some questions because there was a discrepancy.
Does this have to be approved to go to the printer for now? Or is that, that's why it needs to be approved at this time? Yeah. Is it possible to hold that? I mean, or does it have to be approved at a board meeting for it to go to the printer?
It does not need to be board-approved in order for it to go to the printer. So, that would just be a transparency thing that this Board likes to do and a general practice that can be done.
So, if we approve it now, could it kind of be approved with, like, almost as like a first read, assuming that if there's gonna be a second?
Absolutely. You could just bring it back.
Okay.
Next month as well, and then redo it, re.
Well.
Yeah, we'll just, yeah, what we'll do is we'll retroactively do it through July. It'll be really easy. No big deal.
No, we want to make, better that it be accurate than it be done immediately. Yeah. So, do we want to, is it a voice vote? Yeah, so we can do a voice vote on it, and then we'll look at it before it goes to the printer. Yeah. All in favor? Any opposed? Abstentions? It passes. I need a motion to approve the MOU between Board of Education and SCOGI 73.5, PSRP Council Local 1274, IFTAFT. I need a motion to approve the MOU between Board of Education and SCOGI 73.5, PSRP Council Local 1274, IFTAFT regarding the designation and pay differential for assisting students with diapering needs.
I move that we approve the MOU between Board of Education and SCOGI 73.5, PSRP Council Local 1274, IFTAFT regarding designation and pay differential for assisting students with diapering needs.
Second.
A motion made by Member Nelson, seconded by Member Mercer. We can call the roll. Member Wolfinger?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Mercer?
Yes.
Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes. I need a motion to approve the Memorandum of Agreement between Board of Education, the McCracken, Middleton, and Meyer Education Association, and Deb Shover, addressing compensation and personal days during the term of the 2022-2026 Agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve the Memorandum of Agreement between Board of Education, the McCracken, Middleton, and Meyer Education Association, and Deb Shover, addressing compensation and personal days for Deb during the term of 2022-2026 Agreement.
Second.
Motion made by Member Amawala, seconded by Member Mercer. Any discussion? All right. Member Mercer?
Yes.
Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Wolfinger?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes. I need a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
I move that we approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Member Mercer, seconded by Member Nelson. Yes. Member Nelson?
Yes.
Member Amawala?
Yes.
Yes.
Member Mercer?
Yes.
Member Wolfinger?
Yes.
At this time, we have a second opportunity for public comment. If anyone would like to go to the mic. And just as a reminder, it is three minutes.
Hi, I'm Emily. So I was shocked to hear some of the issues that have been happening in our schools. I have to say, I'm a little worried that we are talking things out instead of showing consequences. If I choked someone at work with a hula hoop, I'd be fired. And that's terrifying to me that it's happening in our school. If I was calling someone names, I would be fired. What are we teaching our children? That this is okay, and we're going to talk it out, and you can come back tomorrow and everything's fine. That's not okay. Under no circumstances should a child be scared to come to school and feel like the person that's treating them this way is right there, and they have zero consequences. And it's terrifying and makes me want to move, to be honest. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to go over the calendar review, we have a Finance Committee meeting coming up on Thursday, July 27, and we have a regular board meeting. We do not have a meeting during July for the board. The regular meeting of the board will resume on August 8.
Before we adjourn, can I, can I just mention that Nicole is here? Nicole Derrick is our HR coordinator. This is her first board meeting, and I don't think we ever really got a chance to formally kind of thank her for taking that role and the great job that she does.
All right, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Motion made by Member Nelson, seconded by Member Wolfinger. And we could have probably done this on a voice vote, couldn't we, Alex? Oh, we can't, we, okay.
No. Member Wolfinger?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Nelson? Member Mercer?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.